I love you here. We're just waiting on Jesse, but I think. I think we can go ahead.
Okay, so happy day after Valentine's Day, everyone, and thank you for joining us today. It is February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we are starting our special session at two o'clock. Nancy, do you want to take role or do you? I just want to check and make sure we have everyone. I'm I see Linda's iPad, but I don't know. There. Oh, there you are, Linda. Okay, all right.
Everyone's here, and Nancy actually doesn't have audio today.
Okay.
Okay, I'll speak for Nancy. I think everyone is present.
Okay, everyone is present. Looks like we have a lot of guests joining us as well, and thank you for doing that. This is a special session, so my understanding is it's not a time for public comment. Is that correct? Yep, okay, and Leila, you called the special session to talk primarily about the Quonset hut.
Yes, thank you.
Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Great. Yeah, so today's meeting is really to give you some feedback on some the Quonset hut. Just gave us some direction to look at whether or not the site could accommodate the proposed building if the Quonset hut were be to be retained. And then also to do a cost study. So we've completed that work, and I'm gonna share my screen. I should be able to. I'm walking through a presentation. So I want to cover a few items that came up in that last city council meeting of January eighteenth. So can everyone see my screen? Okay, great. Okay, so just really quickly, before we get to the Q hut, I wanted to go over a couple of items that were sort of outstanding from that last meeting to sort of tie up some loose ends. And offer council a chance to ask any questions or further data if you wanted us to get for you. So some questions came up about the landslide slide risk for the site as well as the tsunami risk. And so I wanted to cover that really quickly. We had a great meeting with Dr. Jonathan Allen, who's a geomorphologist with Dogami. And I'm just learned a tremendous amount as I do every time I meet with him, but specifically about these these sites. And then I want to talk a little bit about the financing strategy because that comes up every time we talk through this to give you guys sort of a framework of the decision making. So that everyone's kind of all on the same page. And then I'll hand it over to Chris to go through the Quonset hut option. And be available to answer any questions about that. So this map was shown at one of our last meetings, and it's the landslide risk assessment from the water resiliency study that the city did back in twenty eighteen. And you can see clearly here that Underhill Plaza, which is over here, kind of falls within this area. And so we dug into this a little bit more because that was a good point to bring up, and it was concerning. And as I mentioned, we met with with Dr. Allen and looked at landslide data for the state. And looked at the three sites that the city owns that have been sort of discussed lightly as as possible other options. So we wanted to take a hard look at that. And what Dr. Allen directed us to, and I'll invite Linda to to chime in here, too, if she has any other additional thoughts. Was to use the Slido data, which is the statewide landslide information layer for Oregon. And this is really the data that we should be using to evaluate the potential for some landslides for our site. And as you can see indicated here with the blue star, the Underhill site is pretty well out of that those zones. Also, just to look a little bit further, the former City Hall site, which is up here on Lanita. And then our current City Hall site and where the Public Safety Building is is located here. So those are moderate susceptibility, obviously, just need further investigation, but I wanted to share that. And I'll just pause for a moment. Linda, I don't know if you you actually had a conversation about this particular document, which is in one of our plans, and I was hoping maybe you could share.
Yeah.
Things you learned about that.
Yeah, so I I do. I'm on the board of Dogami, so this is an area, and I've been involved with emergency preparedness for a long time. So this is an area that I have a high level of interest in. And when I saw this map, I had never seen a map like this before. So I went to my contacts at Dogami, Jonathan, Dr. Jonathan Allen is one, and Dr. Bill Burns, who is the landslide expert at Dogami is the other. And so we took a map that is kind of universally used, which is called the Slido map. And that Slido map is the one that the next map that we use that indicates potential landslides. According to Dogami, there's never been a landslide in this area, not a not a documented landslide. And what you see in the orange and the kind of reddish are potential landslide possibilities. And so what they say is if you see one of these yellow or red areas in an area you want to build in, it's important to bring an engineer in and really do a thorough study. It's not indicating that there will be a landslide in there. It's an indication that you should do additional research to verify whether the landslide is going to be there or not. So this is a pretty clear designation that there's almost no possibility of a landslide on in the Underhill Plaza area or in the other two areas. And that was confirmed by Dr. Allen and Dr. Bill Burns. So I feel pretty confident in this data.
Thanks, Linda.
And I also had the note that I I looked at this as well. These maps are are state-run, and you can see the URL, but we, the public all has access to these maps. So I just did. I just searched Dogami and landslide, and it came up with the link. And you can you can find all these maps for people that that want to look into it further as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jenna. These are publicly accessible maps.
Thanks. Does council have any questions about any of this?
I have a question. How even though there's virtually no possibility, is is that ever taken into account by lenders when we're looking to seek funds for a project?
You know, I think that's a good question. I don't. I don't know.
I actually do. I don't know. I know for sure floods are. But you know, things usually have to carry insurance for, but I've I've not heard that, so I don't know.
And I can speak from the residential side of real estate that, you know, in building you, the GeoHazard report is what comes through, which we have for this plot. Which will take in consideration the Geo, well, geological hazards, so landslides, that will account for all of that. So like Linda earlier mentioned, when you are building in an area, you'll have an engineer come in and assess for that.
Yeah, and I have a slide later, but I did go back and relook at the Geotech. And there was, I I couldn't find anything in there that indicated any concern or issues related to landslides or tsunami. So I have some language in here later about that.
Okay, great.
Cool. Um, so the other thing we looked at was tsunami. And we talked a lot about tsunami inundation zones and the line and where it is. And one of the things I learned from Dr. Allen was there's all different kinds of lines for different kinds of reasons. And so I just want to focus on two that are specific to us because, again, this is something that keeps coming up and just want to put the facts out there. There's the building design line, and that's the line when people start referring to what's happening in Cannon Beach, for example. They're within this line, and so that is causing some impacts on their project design, having to ink because it is an essential facility that they're building. And then there's the evacuation line, which is a line that's really drawn to sort of show the kind of maximum extent of the tsunami as a way for getting people to gather outside of it. So it's it's a bit further distance. And so I'll show you some maps that show that. So this is, again, I just pulled this offline. I know they're not nicely formatted here. But this is the ASDE tsunami hazard tool, and this is what building officials will use to evaluate a project as to whether or not it falls into that line, as I understand it. And so you can see here indicated by this arrow, this is the Public Safety Building and the Temporary City Hall, Old City Hall and Underhill Plaza. I just want to zoom in a little bit because when we talked with Dr. Allen about this in detail, it was sort of unknown whether or not this would be applicable to the Public Safety Building, but you can see the line is we're literally on the line, and the line actually crosses through our building. And so there's some indication that, you know, we likely would have to meet the standards, but it's an unknown. So I want to make that clear, but I do want to show how really close to that line those two buildings are, which, when you're evaluating a site to do a site study, these are the kinds of factors that you want to take into account because that complicates the the project. These are the tsunami evacuation zones. So the areas indicated in yellow are the XXL one. So I think, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, with the way that Dr. Allen described it, is like this is sort of the maximum extent.
Right.
Like, kind of worst case scenario. And so that's what the evacuation zones are designated around. So in terms of the evacuation zones, where we're located currently, and Old City Hall fall into that. And then Underhill's well outside of of that zone, and then the area that's considered outside of the hazard zone. This is from our geotechnical. So the geotechnical chapter, section five of that goes through seismic hazards and evaluation. So it goes that through that in detail. There's a lot of words in there I don't understand or had to look up, but many of them I didn't, and it reads pretty clearly. So I just cut a couple of pieces from that, but just saying the tsunami is not an issue with the site. And the slope instability here is also not an issue. I couldn't find anything that specifically referred to landslides. I could have missed it, but I read it through it twice. And that's that's the kind of key points I pulled from it. So I just wanted to pull this kind of all together for us to look at because this idea of looking at other sites, and this isn't a question I'm asking to answer today, but I did want to plant the seed. Has come up. And so, you know, the 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 focus has been on Underhill, was purchased for that pro purpose. The City Hall has really been directed to be on that site, but we've kind of been down this path a couple of times. So I did want to look at sort of those factors and evaluate them and then some other factors. So in terms of size, you know, Underhill Plaza is quite a bit larger. So in terms of meeting our needs, it's a lot easier to design. Old City Hall and the current space that we're in, including the Public Safety Building, have more challenges. It isn't to say it's not possible. I'm just saying there's more challenges there. Underhill's outside of the tsunami evacuation zone. Both other properties are within the evacuation zone. Underhill and Old City Hall are outside of the design, building design tsunami line. And the Public Safety Temporary City Hall is for sure within the ASE line, and then Public Safety is kind of on the line. In terms of landslide potential, Underhill and Old City Hall is none. You know, Public Safety, it had that little area. It's moderate to none, really. Is there space for gathering for Underhill? Yes, the other two sites, there is not. And is there potential for storage? I mentioned these two because these have come up significantly over the last year and a half. And then also in terms of the original intent for using Underhill was for emergency gathering. The other thing I want to point out, too, is that when we do start looking at other sites, we've come pretty far in terms of Underhill Plaza. We've expended a significant number of resources to get us to a cost estimate that's actually worth its weight. So I've said this to you, and I've said this before, that I think if we are going to do a site analysis, it needs to be done in a comparative way. So, for example, in terms of the condition of the buildings, we do understand what's happening in Underhill because we've done those studies. The other two sites, we've done some little stuff, but nothing significant. And so we don't understand what the foundation of the structure is. In terms of studies that you really need to have in order to get to the level of understanding we have, say, about Underhill, those are listed here. So understanding hazardous materials. We have some partial information on Old City Hall and and the current buildings that staff are occupying. You need an ALTA survey. I don't believe we have either of these for Old City Hall or the public or current building. You need a geotechnical report to understand what's happening under the ground. Some of these are also required for lending. We need to do concrete testing to actually make a real determination if the foundations, for example, in the current Public Safety Building could actually stand muster and be meet that category for requirement. There needs to be a structural evaluation, so beyond just a visual inspection, but actually going in and looking at the systems and doing some destructive testing, as we did in Underhill. And then for lending purposes, actually, we do need a phase one ESA, or at least that's been in my experience. That's an environmental assessment, and so we've completed that for Underhill. None of these studies have been done on the old City Hall building or the public, the current spaces that we're in. And so I think it's just really important that if we're going to do this right, that you do it right, and you actually do the real studies and you could do a comparative. Because the analysis is only as good as the data that goes into it. So kind of a quick study look is a quick study look. It doesn't really get you very far. And so what we have on Underhill are really the best estimates to date based on solid data and factual information. And I also just want to point out, too, that history does have a way of repeating itself. So, you know, I want to point out, kind of here we are today, having another discussion about other sites. But back when the PFAC was established, and I went back through the records and found some minutes from both city council meetings and from PFAC's meetings indicating that they did kind of start to look at other sites. They bunny trailed off the original intent, and council said, all right, if we're going to do it, now's the time. And so so they did, and the records aren't clear what happened. But at some point, the focus became a rehab of the schoolhouse or new construction, and then we kind of know what happened from there, right? The bond failed, so on and so forth. Back in ninety-three, when this was first starting to be explored prior to the fund being established in ninety-five, the city manager at the time started looking at adjacent properties to Old City Hall. So this has also come up and mentioned to me. Looked at possibly doing an addition to that old building. There's records that we have that indicate a fair amount of work went into this. And then it fell flat for one reason or another. So I just want to, you know, note that because when we start to get close to a decision, I think that we do start to look at, okay, have we looked at everything? Are we sure? And so I just want to be sure that people do understand that we've kind of been round and round. And we have done quite a lot of look at these things off and on. And so I just think it's important for council to consider that if you do want to switch tracks, you're going to have, I think, to do it right. It means you're going to have to spend additional time and resources to conduct the due diligence and to do it appropriately. Because anything else, I think, would lead to bad information, and bad information often can be more damaging than it can be helpful. So those are some things that kind of came up as I was doing the research. And some of the questions that were raised at the January eighteenth meeting that I wanted to make sure that both this council and the community had ready access to.
So Leila, if you could go back one slide, this PFAC, there was the bond in two thousand nineteen. So and you said they looked at other sites. Did they not do any engineering studies at that time of those other sites?
None that I could find in the record, yeah. Does anyone else have any other questions about this before I move on? Okay. Promise I'm almost done. Okay, so the other big thing is the financing strategy. So there's several pieces to the puzzle that we all need to put together before you really can be in a position to make an informed decision. And you're not there yet. We're not there. The kind of first two pieces are really in pretty good shape. So design and cost, we're we're trucking along. And once we have direction from council on where to place the building on the site, we can finish up this first estimate and thirty percent design. We can kind of get to that milestone and give you some really solid information. The next piece of it is really on me, and that's kind of what I've been working on, is developing projections. So a number of folks have mentioned, how are we going to look at this in the context of all the things that the city has to pay for? For infrastructure, I would argue that a public building, a facility is infrastructure. But I understand what people are asking. How are we going to pay for the water infrastructure? How are we going to pay for the roads? How? So part of doing a projection analysis to say, how are we going to grow and change over the next many years? And then how does this financial decision fit into that? So that's what I'm working on right now. I am behind where I wanted to be at this point, and that's largely due to the delay in our audit, which we just received, and we'll be going to council in March. So I'm making tracks. No excuses, but that's just sort of where it's at. And so I have a timeline that I'll share with you in the next slide that'll give you a sense of when we'll start talking about that. But we need to understand the financial projections before I can start to build a financing strategy or a series of proposals for you to consider. I need to see how does it fit in with our current operational requirements, our reserve goals and requirements, and then kind of what's left over before I can make any sort of assessments of what our financial position is relative to the city, either taking out debt or moving forward with a bond. So when I come back to you with information, it'll have projections, and we'll also be looking at funding proposals. So how are we going to pay for this? And then how does that fit in with our financial picture? So there's a lot of work that goes into that. It's in progress, and that will be happening kind of parallel to the design and cost discussions. But I just want to make sure that we understand that, like, there's all these pieces have to come together. No one's going to ask you to make any decisions about any of that until you have all that information in front of you. So right now, we're really focusing on how do we finish the design so we can get you a good cost estimate to then finalize and inform our projections and our financing. Does anybody have any questions for me about that? So schedule. So this is proposed, and this, you know, we've kind of learned this year, you got to let it ride. So depends on your decision making and how things flow, but this is sort of my hope. Is today we review and discuss the findings on the Q hut, and so I'm going to hand it over to Chris after the slide to go through that. We'd like to get direction on that today, but it could happen in March, and so we can put that on the agenda for our March eighth meeting. If folks need more time, and that would make sense. And then at some point in March, I'll work with council. I know we have some folks out of town to schedule a financial strategy discussion. We'll all come with some proposed projections and sort of a breakdown of the project budget. And then in April eighth, our hope is, assuming we get direction, the design team will present the thirty percent schematic design and the cost estimate. And we presume at some point, we're going to want to do a community meeting to share that same information and get feedback from the community on that. I anticipate mid-April at our work session to have a second financial strategy discussion with council. And then ideally by May, we can be moving towards a decision. If that needs to flex, then it needs to flex. So for now, this is kind of what I'm hoping we can get to. But again, while I want to keep you moving down the track, because we know that we need to keep moving, I also want to make sure that you're having adequate time to make informed decisions and that you're getting all your questions answered. So that's super important to me. So before I hand it over to Chris, does anyone have any questions about any of this, or is there anything in this that y'all want to talk about before we move forward?
I appreciate you putting the timeline together. I think that was something that I kind of had asked for at the last meeting, and and I think this will help clear up when some of the decisions are going to be made.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. Okay, with that, Chris, do you want to take the reins and I'll I'll drive?
Sure thing, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So we just have a few slides to share with you today. What you see on the screen now is what we shared with you at our last meeting. And really, we were asked to look at, you know, what would it mean to keep the Q hut on the site? How how can we kind of reconfigure the site plan to accommodate that? I I think the good news, we spent a little time looking at some different options. I'm going to show you an option shortly. The good news is the site is plenty big. We think the site could handle keeping the Q hut. Of course, there's a question of cost, and I'll let Jesse and Jason kind of talk about that a little bit. But I wanted to show you kind of where we were and where we would likely go if if we decide to keep the Q hut. I think with with the, just keep in mind, this is early. And we, there's a lot of finessing that we can do to what you're going to see here. But the first scheme, again, what we showed you last time, it's nice and compact. That's a good thing about it. It leaves a lot of the future site for future development, which was something that we heard a lot about during the public engagement process. But of course, it takes the Q hut away, and we have no onsite storage. So that's kind of what we showed you last time. Next slide, please. I think if we were to keep the Q hut, we'd we'd end up moving the building closer to Division Street, not far from where the school sits presently. You can see the orientation changes by about ninety degrees. Now we're kind of entering more off the corner of the site, which I think is actually quite nice, so we can kind of engage that corner. Use those two buildings to kind of create a space at that corner. You know, it does use a fair bit more of the site. So that's something to keep in mind as you're thinking about this. But it does, on the other hand, allow us to hold on to all that storage. So, you know, really, I think architecturally and from a site planning standpoint, we're pretty convinced that keeping the Q hut is not a problem for the project outside of the cost implications. We did some back and forth with Jason, kind of. At first, I thought this was going to kind of really increase our site work number a bit. Turns out, it really hasn't done that by any real measurable amount. Jason, you can slap me if I'm wrong about that. But so we think essentially, we're talking about no major cost increase outside of the scope of the renovation of the Q hut itself. So any kind of questions about what you're seeing on the screen right now?
Chris, I'm just curious about impacts on the traffic flow. I mean, obviously, the original design, most of the action will be coming off of Mansleyda Avenue, pretty close to that intersection with Classic. This picture obviously throws it over towards Division. Uh, this picture obviously throws it over towards Division, which is more of a residential street, at least across the way. Um, I know that wasn't really your charge on this particular uh request for further thought, but uh, do you have any have any thoughts about uh whether the new locate, this location uh is either better or worse in terms of a a traffic flow or uh neighborhood impact uh respective?
I think that's a good question. I think obviously, uh, you know, the homes across Division are going to be a lot closer to the building. On on the traffic flow, I I typically think about um, you know, accessing the parking. And in in this scheme, what we've been asked in terms of when we've, we've had our conversations with the police folks, I'm with the city hall folks. Uh, we have a required number of parking spaces as per the zoning code. What we're doing is kind of splitting those pretty evenly between the public, so the front facing stuff that you see on Manzanita and the staff slash police uh entry, which we're showing here off of Division. So really, that's going to be more, I don't think there's going to be a lot of going in and out of that one as much as maybe on the public side for what that's worth. But yeah, certainly, this is going to put a little more pressure on Division. Uh, whereas the other scheme kind of pulls it back uh closer to Classic. Now, well, as we get into the development, you know, there's going to be a, we'll have to study exactly where those curb cuts can go. There's a distance from the intersection we're going to have to make uh just for kind of just general safety. But I think it's manageable, certainly. I don't think the traffic impact will be terrible, but I do think the folks on Division are gonna, you know, they're going to be a lot closer to the facility um than in the other scheme.
So so Chris, uh, first line, really pleased that you can say the the Q hut. That's very exciting. The concern I have is the environmental issue. I mean, we've been talking about um the fact that there's asbestos, particularly on the outside of the building. Did you take that into account? And how will we deal with that if we choose to keep the Q hut where it is?
Yeah, that's a great segue into our next slide. I'm gonna, we have a kind of a series of things to think about that are outside of just the planning here. Uh, and I'll let maybe Jesse kind of walk us through these with a little help from Jason, if that makes sense, and I'll, I can happily chime in with answering any questions.
Yeah, sure thing. Um, so um, that that's a great question, Linda. So what Jason looked at specifically for the cost, who could probably talk about it in better detail, but we're, what do we, to keep the Q hut as storage, what is the bare minimum we have to do right now in order to do that? And one of those things is to abate the roof, replace it, do some structural upgrades. And that was kind of about it. Like, there's some things that just absolutely have to be done in order to keep it a storage. And we came up with a budget range in order to do that of a kind of this five to six hundred thousand um in order to do those steps. Now, the, I think some important considerations is that would preserve thirty-two hundred square feet of storage, which is great. But that building is not at a risk category four, so the bulk of your storage um that the city has, which is a lot of emergency supplies, can't go in there uh because this building is not meant to survive a uh at a, an event like that. So, yes, you could have the storage, but it wouldn't be able to store any emergency supplies. Um, if we were to keep it um and invest this, you know, five to six hundred grand to keep it minimally available as storage um and not do much else to it, that is likely far cheaper than than building a new storage facility um from scratch. And um, now, if you wanted to keep the Q hut with dreams of turning it into uh storage for emergency supplies or a community center, that is a whole nother design level, and the five to six hundred grand that we're budgeting to do this work is completely inadequate to make it into a functional facility with other uses. Um, and you know, those those presentations we've showed you in the past where Jason showed us like having to kind of deconstruct the buildings in order to repair foundations, in order to um repair some of the structural work. Kind of the minute you think about needing the Q hut as a building with another use, we'd probably still have to go through those steps. So if we save it, it is purely pretty basic storage unless you want to invest a lot more money in it.
Um, Jesse, I had a question. Wouldn't some of that money be able to come from T L T uh uh transient lodging tax? And and there's also some money in Tillamook County um as well that that would go towards community areas if it's used by both tourists and locals? Do you know?
I could probably answer that. It's kind of a Leila question. Um, so yeah, we could, if we use it for a visitor's for a purpose that's consistent with the law. Um, we have, I think, half a million or less. I can't remember off the top of my head, in T L T, and then we'd have to apply for grants, so it wouldn't cover all of it. But it would have to be for that purpose.
They just.
Question?
I have a question, Jesse, about um significant added costs. What what, you know, five to six hundred thousand seems um significant?
It is.
What uh, what are we talking? I know you can't give us, you know, straight numbers necessarily, but are we talking several million again? What what are we, what are we talking about?
Uh, to turn it into a a building that's other than storage?
Yeah, just significant added costs. I mean, are we talking?
Yeah. Let's.
Uh, yeah.
We haven't specifically studied that. Jason could probably pull a number out of thin air better than I can. But I think you're right. You're kind of barking down this more in the millions range rather than hundreds of thousands. Um, and again, it comes down to those foundation concerns, you know, like when we need it to be functional. And the Q hut is in better shape than the school. Um, so there's some differences there. But we have to make the foundation up to code, and that's, you know, if it, if we can't do it by just doing some simple repairs and we have to deconstruct it, then we might as well just build you a new building. Um, it doesn't make sense to try and keep it. So, um, I don't know. Jason, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure, yeah.
Thanks.
I don't think we know what what it will take to take it to a risk category four. I think that the simple answer is we definitely would need to understand that. I can take a thousand assumptions, which I do every day, but you know, at the bare minimum, I'm going to guess that we're going to have to go drill in screw piles all the way around that. We're going to have to fully understand the existing concrete and and its its viability. Um, you know, if I had to take a, pu- put a gun to my head, kind of answer, I'd say you might double it. Um, but I thought it'd be helpful for the council to to understand what I actually priced for the Q hut. Because we were going off the W R K report to the, for the primary estimate, but we also took a few other assumptions just based on kind of the natural progression of building things. So that estimate included abating the roof. We have a number for that. We know what that is. It's about fifty thousand dollars roughly. Uh, it includes taking off the back shed entirely, removing it. So there's some demo costs to take off the back shed. Uh, it includes taking off those two columns out front and removing and replacing both garage doors. I figured that we'd want a very good looking garage door if this thing went back into place. So now, as we're reconstructing, the W R K report had us putting uh L metal anchors on every single truss back to the foundations. There's a hundred and sixty anchors that go in the ground that secure the hoop trusses to the concrete. I then have to put plywood over the entire thing to provide roof shear. Not not an easy thing to do on a rounded surface, as you can imagine. Um, the roof itself, uh, we got a roof material cost. Uh, the roof itself is almost a hundred thousand dollars of that five hundred-ish stuff. And they have to make those roof panels um semi-rounded, of course. So as we, it's it's a kind of a three-part system. And we would, it's a, it's a standing seam roof. We would seam the roof back to the plywood. I added uh a new mandor in the front and some plywood up eight foot on the inside. So if you can envision, oh, and sorry, siding on both uh north and south faces in shingles, I made an assumption. So if you were looking at that building after we were done with a half a million dollars, it'd have a new roof, it'd have new plywood under the roof, it'd have some new plywood up the walls. It'd be securely anchored to the concrete, two very good looking, probably aluminum glass type garage doors. We could save some money if we wanted to go back to something like fiberglass. But I thought we would want to, I I don't think Chris would let me put fiberglass doors back up there. And a new mandor, and that's about it. Nothing really to do with the existing concrete or the slab that we know has some cracks in it. I don't know if that's helpful to understand kind of what went into that estimate.
Thank you. Can I just add a couple of things on that, Jason? Um, that also, that five to six hundred number is a total project number, so it includes the soft costs. Um, so just to be clear about that. But I think maybe um, Brad, your question about, you know, what are these significant added costs? I think it has a lot to do with what we decide to do with it. If we're going to turn it into a community center, for example, um, right now, there's no insulation, right? There's no real electrical plumbing mechanical systems of any scope. And I think one thing to consider as you, as we consider saving this is if we think it's going to be a community center, let's just take the insulation as one potential complication, right? We'll have to insulate it to meet code. One of the things I think everybody loves about that building is you walk in there, you see the structure, you see the ribs, right? Well, if you wanted to preserve that visual quality of the interior, the way to do that is to insulate on the outside of the roof. Right? That's more complicated, more expensive. And if we're going to do this in two steps, where we take it now and reuse it for something else later, we'd want to have those kind of thoughts in our minds as we were deciding what this first step is. Because it would be a shame to save it, and then when we have to insulate it, you lose all that architecture that everyone seems to like so much. So, you know, I I just say that as a as a caution as we think about this on, you know, if we think it's going to stay storage, it's a pretty straightforward thing. If we think we're going to turn it into something else, I think that number is going to grow pretty significantly.
Yeah.
Sure. Well, I have another question. I, you know, as I was researching, uh, you know, Big Brother on my phone, uh, must have picked up that I was looking at Q huts, and uh I got a uh, so my little ads that start popping up in on apps. Uh, I start talking about Q huts, uh, new Q huts for sale. And um, when you're talking about um a new similarly sized building, uh, storage quality being more expensive than um rehabbing this, is that, is that accurate?
Uh, Chris, can you rephrase that, Brad?
Well, okay, yes.
Go ahead.
Can we buy a new Q hut for, if it's going to be storage and not um, you know, be used for something else? If it's just going to be storage, is a new Q hut, if that's what we decided to do, cheaper, same price? Have we, have we looked at, have we looked at that?
I think the devil is in the details. What is that structure? Uh, is that wood frame, metal? Is that just a kit, kind of hoop house? Um, my general feeling and experience is that to build something new would be quite a bit more money. We would have to pour new foundations. We'd have to excavate the ground. We'd have to stabilize the ground. We'd have to uh buy and install some form of trusses, whether those are wood, steel, or other. So um, you know, price per square foot is always interesting when you start talking about this stuff. We've got uh, I'm just going to use five hundred thousand dollars as the marker on thirty-two hundred square feet. That's a hundred and fifty-six dollars a square foot. And under prevailing wages, public work, it wouldn't surprise me for even a moderate building to be two fifty in north, three hundred dollars a square foot. So quite honestly, I think it's going to be more.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question, um, and maybe Leila, you know, the answer to this. It, um, the storage is going to be primarily for public works, is that correct?
There's, so there's been a desire to have storage for emergency equipment
Mm-hmm.
at Underhill. Public Works has some storage needs, but those can be accommodated up um at the Public Works building. So there's been discussion about having emergency equipment on Underhill um as a separate future projects.
Well, and I I'd like to speak to that too, because um, part of the, well, part of the reason uh they were, we were building the city hall there and and uh and for the other uses, it's an assembly area. So in an emergency or in a tsunami, that's where about two thousand people would be uh congregating. And it would be great if we could have supplies uh at the location for that, that uh, for that event. Now, that's part of the reason we've been talking about a place to put emergency supplies close to an area where a lot of people will be assembling.
And I, my question goes with Deb. Um, we're talking about storage. Right now, it's, everything was moved out of the Q hut. Um, for the emergency storage, we would need the level four structure, which can, this Quonset hut could not get there in a reasonable number. Linda, how much?
There are supplies that you can put in there. What what you can't put in there are emergency vehicles.
So how? How many supplies, like, how much square footage will the emergency supplies take up?
You know, I I don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay, but could you assume that it's less than a full Quonset hut?
You know, I I don't have the answer. I, if if we're, if, if we are seriously considering that, that's a really good question. And I I'd want to have a precise answer, and I need to talk to Lee Hiltonbrand and Dan about what that, what what exactly we'd be talking about.
Can I just add one point I don't think we um actually really made is that um, if you elect to save the Q hut, um, that that abatement work really needs to happen as soon as we have some sort of decision. And so once of, you know, vote is made to save it, that money like has to be spent because that that's uh, it's a hazard and we have to address it. Um, so just want to point that out. And then if we decide that it's not going to be saved, the budget to abate that roof and demo is in the cost estimate we've prepared for the city hall project.
Hmm. Yeah, and when you get to the point, so you can, you'll need to sort of give us, you need to give us direction because it's a critical path on which scheme to pursue. What happens with the Q hut will be, will, like Jesse said, we do have to abate either way. So an action has to occur, either decision that you make, but when that action occurs isn't in March. You know, we can talk about that further down the line. You can just direct us to say, go with this approach. The team will go back, finish thirty percent. And depending on what, yes or no, what side of that decision tree we're on, then the team will start to work on a plan for addressing the Quonset hut. So if you say we're going to tear it down and build it here, we have to have a plan to abate and address that. Or if you say, irregardless to, I should mention, if you elect to move into phase two, you have to do something. So I just think that's really important for the council and for the community to understand that we're at a point with the Quonset hut where we don't have a choice. Um, we have to address the Quonset hut. It's just how we address it. Um, but again, I just want to make clear that's not, you're not deciding specifically how you address it in March. You're just telling the design team, take this approach, and then we will work out those details as we move along um the process.
And it would be helpful to have that discussion now, and then we can vote on it March eighth.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to kind of provide that space today.
I was um curious, uh, Linda, do you happen to know, um, or maybe when you talk with Lee, uh, one of the questions I have is if we don't use the Q hut for storage for emergency food and that sort of thing, where else do we have opportunities to do that?
Uh, storage is a huge issue, and we don't have a lot of other uh other opportunities. Um, you know, I think, I think kind of the decision, and I I think emergency supplies kind of the decision, and I think emergency supplies at some point need to be stored on Underhill Plaza. I think that's really important. Whether it is the Q Hut or not, I think is the decision we're making today. There are, my, the only thing that is stopping me from, from saying, let's get rid of the Q Hut. Five hundred to six hundred thousand is a lot of money. Is the issue that new builds of a storage facility could be more than five to six hundred thousand. That's the only thing I'm whipping on. I mean, I, I love the Q Hut. I, I think it's great. I, I think to do more than emergency storage, it gets really expensive. And I think five hundred to six hundred thousand on top of what we're gonna be spending for the City Hall is, is a lot of money.
There are opportunities for that emergency storage too. You may not need as big of a space. There may be other funding sources for that. So I think just, I want folks to know that, that you know, if the decision is not to maintain it for that storage, I think understanding what the needs are will help inform that decision. So you're not, you're not giving up on storage. You're just saying maybe not this particular building for storage, or we wanna use this building for storage and help us figure out how to do it.
Well, you know, I think it goes to Jenna's question. I, you know, it's not, the facility is not set up for a storage in a way that is efficient. I mean, you've got a huge area, a tall area, and you know, it's just not, it's not an efficient building for storing supplies. Just because, you know, it's, everything would be on the ground and you'd be stacking it on top of things. So it's, it's, you know, it's not a perfect situation for storing, number one. And number two, if we can, if we can keep storied, the the thought that storage, a storage place in the future could be designed for exactly what we need, that to me makes a lot of sense.
I'll just add to that, to Jenna's question. You know, if we find out that we don't need three thousand square feet, but we need, you know, eight hundred to twelve hundred efficient square feet. You know, we're building a category four police station that currently has a single car garage, basically, for their vehicles. It might be a more cost effective approach to expand this project by another eight hundred thousand square feet. Add a few more piles than we're already doing. And that's probably the most cost effective way to get that storage, assuming you don't need three thousand square feet of it.
Would that be done at the same time, or is that something that you can add on in five years?
Well, I think we could design it to be either way, but it's probably most cost effective to do it concurrently. But, you know, certainly we could prepare for it to arrive later.
There's no question that adding eight hundred square feet to this building is most cost effective. We're already out there. We're spending the general conditions, fencing, port of bodies, supervision, et cetera, to get something built. It probably doesn't add that much time to the schedule. It's just raw cost of materials and labor kind of added on top of it. So I concur with Chris.
That, that would be a wonderful solution, I think.
I, I guess for my, what I think about in terms of Underhill Plaza and City Hall goes back to the, the City Hall presentations that we've been doing this fall and winter. It seems like we have a consensus from the city based on the different designs that we've seen that, and I, I lie in this area as well, that I would like to see a smaller footprint on the southeast corner of the lot. I, I worry about like the residential feel of division. I'm not a huge fan of that, and I just, the amount of open space is really intriguing. And I think, you know, let's just keep it an efficient, tight space. And not keep the Quonset Hut, even though I think it's adorable.
So you would go back to the first site plan that we saw as opposed to the second, is that right, Jenna? Yeah, okay. Could, could, could we possibly see those again?
Accidentally closed it, she's gonna give me a moment.
So if we looked, if we took it back to the corner and we looked at the additional space for storage, is that going to, is the cost going to be significant? Or can we get a sense of how much cost that would add to the project if we were able to have storage on where the police building is?
Yeah, I think certainly we could work that up. I think, Jason, do you agree? It'll depend a lot on how much we think we need and if we could get a, a, a general sense of area, we'd kind of update our plans to accommodate that and have Jason kind of run through the impacts. But if it's just raw storage space, that's part of that risk category four volume, I would suspect it wouldn't be, it would be fairly efficient. Jason, tell me if I'm saying that right.
Yeah, these are hard things to analyze on the fly, of course, but a, our general price per square foot under my raw budget was, I believe five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. You know, on the high end, we could assume that to be the same, just keep everything the same. That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars added to the project. We might, that, as it's efficient, very simple space, no fixtures, finishes. We might bring that down to three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, which might get it in for, oh, I don't know, you know, instead of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars add, we might add three hundred thousand dollars to the project as don't hold me to it, but I'm throwing numbers on the wall.
And can you, Linda, you mentioned, does it have to be category four? Could it be category two? If we're not doing vehicles?
I can try to answer that for you, Jenna. It's, it's a little bit of a gray area. The code specifically calls out vehicles and emergency operations. So I think that's a little bit up for us all to interpret and probably the, the building official too, but I, I think, you know, anything you're gonna wanna have access to after a significant emergency probably wants to be in a risk category four facility.
And when we're talking, as we were talking about, down the road, putting an additional building someplace that would be storage, that would have to be category four in a separate building, which would be much more expensive than adding additional space to this particular design.
Linda, can I, can I ask you, my understanding from prior conversations is that the desire to have emergency equipment on Underhill is primarily designed to address visitors, tourists that'll be in town?
It's, it's designed to, to take care of everybody. We expect to have, depending on the season, we have to have a lot of visitors as part of, but it's, yeah.
All right. I'm just wondering if there've been any discussions about using T L T money for that kind of a purpose? If, if we're creating a structure that has a specific impact and design intentionally to, I thought from prior conversations, significantly benefit tourists or visitors, might we not be able to use T L T money for that storage facility? I don't expect an answer right now, but that's the kind of thing that I think we are gonna have to scramble to find out if we, if we vote, if we don't vote today to move forward one way or the other. I mean, I, I personally, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like we would be setting the project back significantly, if at all, by waiting for a council vote on, at our March meeting. The problem is between now and a March meeting, there are about fifty questions we gotta get the answers to. And we could probably get a few of them. I don't think we can get all fifty. I do think that, I do think we got some work to do between now and, and March to make a meaningfully different assessment in March than we can make today. I mean, I, I would have to say, based on everything I've heard, I'm less excited about the Q Hut for storage. I'm impressed with the possibility of extending the police facility for storage. I still would love to see the Q Hut somehow retained for some multi-use facility, even if it's an indoor-outdoor kind of thing. I think at one point, Chris, you were talking about, maybe you could open up the back of the building that faces out onto the open field and, and you know, there's a wide range of potential uses. Farmer's market in, you know, more of the rainy season, other community gatherings, musical events, all of that. But to get the kind of information developed to make a logical decision about that at the March eighth meeting seems, seems a little far fetched. So I'm reluctant to postpone a decision today if we're not gonna really have an opportunity on March eighth to bring meaningful, new information to the table to make a different decision.
Well, I, you know, one of the things I think we can answer by March eighth is whether we could use T L T money for expanded storage space, which would be utilized to, and I, and I think there's a, I think we can craft a really good case that says the majority of it is really going to be for people who don't have supplies and are here as visitors. So I think we could make a good case, whether that's a case that follows the legal requirements. I, I think it's something we could find out fairly quickly.
Could I ask, just, I wanna just clarify, because I guess I'm, I'm not seeing the list of complicated questions. I feel like we're dealing with if I could just sort of summarize what I feel like I'm hearing is, so it's sort of to keep the Q Hut or not for storage, we're looking at potentially an alternate, and maybe that's how we could approach this as opposed to hanging up the project, is to say, and design team, correct me if I'm wrong or saying this incorrectly, but sort of like an ad alternate where we do a design, and then we do an alternative that includes storage. And then we can evaluate those cost differences. Because what I don't want to have happen is our, now we're scrambling to figure out storage when we've all kind of already agreed that storage is a separate project. But if we can include it in this, I think that would be the way I would recommend doing it, is through an alternative design. And I've worked on budget constrained projects where we've done that before. We wanted a certain type of thing, and we said we can only afford X. And so when we got to like a hundred percent design development, we saw, oh, we actually are closer than we thought. We could add in the thing we wanted. So if that were the case, what else needs to be answered in order for you to make a decision on the eighth? And am I?
If we were looking, if we were looking at it strictly from the storage issue, I think that, that would be a lot easier. I guess the, the question is, you know, is the, is that the only possible use of Q Hut, uh, storage? If, if the, the other use, which obviously is more expensive, but also probably more impactful for the community and more interesting and exciting in many respects, that seems like it takes a lot more thought and research. And ultimately, we have to sort of investigate funding possibilities that we can't guarantee ourselves on March eighth. All we can do is investigate the possibility of funding possibilities. So
For renovating the Q Hut for a different purpose?
For, yes, yeah.
Because I do want council to keep in mind that that's not a goal right now. That's a significant, extensive, significant undertaking to do outreach and analysis and a site study to redevelop this property. So if we were to do that, you gotta shelve something else. Another.
I guess that's my point. That's what I'm trying to wrestle with. I don't know how we, I don't know how we get that keyed up for a decision three weeks from now. It's markedly different than what we can do right now. Decision wise.
Yes, so I, I guess it might probably would be if it, if it, if we're thinking about it for storage and as a, as a key facility for storage, I, I don't think it's a good building for storage. So just in terms of if that is the only use we're thinking about, I think we should tear it down. If we have time or if Jerry's idea can, can be thoroughly researched by March the eighth, I think it's really interesting. I just don't know whether that's a possibility or not.
We can give you, you know, a sense, like if you're asking, can you use money to T L T money that we have and potentially qualify for T L T money that the county has to do something in the Q Hut? The answer is sure, absolutely. I'm sure we would be competitive for resources from the county. I think we could easily justify using, it's a facility, it's, it's cake. The answer is yes. You could totally use it. How much and what you use it for are a different story, right? So if it's half a million, you've wiped out the money that we have just to get it airtight. Okay, then we gotta get money to do whatever it is we're gonna do with it. We gotta figure out what it is we're gonna do with it. You've been on this journey with me for eighteen months on a building we knew, well, sort of what we were gonna do. So I just, I don't want to, I love the idea. This is actually what I live for, is doing cool redevelopment projects, not building city halls. Like, that's fun to me, but I don't wanna underestimate that what you're asking is a massive, massive amount of work. And if that's the direction, that's fine. Staff can't do that.
I don't think I'm asking for it. I'm essentially agreeing with you that in order to have the information available on March eighth, we would be asking for an awful lot. That, I guess what I'm saying is, if it's not gonna happen by March eighth, then perhaps we should decide today.
I agree. And I, I hear what you're saying about a community space. I'm hoping that you know, the council chamber isn't just one use for that space. There's also a covered patio in the front that, you know, that will, could be a smaller community space. So I don't want, I don't wanna look at council chambers as this is our only purpose for this. It can, it has, it has other uses.
I would, I would agree. And you know, if you look at how long it's taken us to get to this point, like, I can't imagine us moving forward on that project for a considerable amount of time. And you know, I, I I think we should continue to evaluate the project as it's presented. And I feel like that's kind of our charge. And I, I think that it's probably time for the Q Hut to go. I, I don't feel like it's worth spending six hundred potential thousand dollars to take a risk down the future. I think we already have a lot of concerns about the cost of this project. And to lump an additional six hundred thousand dollars onto it for a potential a potential space down the, down the road that we know how long everything takes seems a little grandiose.
Yeah, I, I, I would go along with that as well, but I would really like to see us explore what Public Works needs as far as storage, because I know that they've got some needs up there and that they were kind of looking at that Q Hut with an eye to, gosh, we're really gonna miss that if it goes. So I'm kind of curious what their needs are. Not that it ties in with the City Hall necessarily, but in the big picture of what's best for the city.
Yeah. Now, Dan, I have frequent conversations about that, and he's, we've been talking about what they can do up at Public Works. And currently, you know, Dan, being resourceful as he is, uses At Public Works and currently, you know, Dan being resourceful as he is, uses Conex boxes and those have been really effective. So we're not in a storage crisis, like, we're cool, um, we're, we're good. Uh, but and Dan and I certainly are having active conversations about about this.
Okay, does he have enough space up there, um, Leila, to, um, bring in more? I mean, is there property available? Okay.
There is, yeah.
Okay. Hmm. Well, I would love to see the 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 Q hut in into a public. Facility, but it doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense, and I certainly don't see it as a storage, um, as a storage unit. So that would be my vote.
Agreed.
Can can we make a decision on the Q hut now? I think that's, I think it there's certainly sounds like a consensus.
Sounds like we we could call for a vote on that. Is is there a motion? The motion would move to, um.
I believe.
Well. The motion I would assume should be to proceed with one of the two. Uh, schemes, one of which obviously eliminates the Q hut. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I'll I'll move that we go with the one that's on my screen right now. Scheme one, uh. I would move that we ask the design team to proceed, uh, to completion of phase one, uh, on scheme one.
I second.
Okay, so the motion has been made to, uh, focus on scheme one. It has been seconded by, uh, Linda. Um, all in favor? Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, so that looks like it's passing unanimously. So the Q hut is going away.
We'll give it a proper send off when it's time.
That's a tough one, I'll tell you, that really is.
It is, actually, but it's it's progress, so thank you.
Um, I have a question. I know we're we're. Getting close to time here, about ten minutes after three, um. At some point, um, I know there's some people that have been, uh. Talking about not being able to vote on the purchase of Underhill. Um, is there a way to get community support behind, uh. Uh, to to be able to measure the support from the community for going ahead with this kind of an expenditure? Um, I know we've, people have been writing letters, et cetera, but you know, letters are going to be a small kind of a dent. And, um, we did a a bond measure before back in two thousand nineteen. We all know the results of that, but. Um, at least people had a voice and they were able to say what they wanted. Um, what's involved in putting this to a vote?
Are you talking, putting it on the ballot?
Well, I'm curious what options there are. Um, you mentioned at one point doing a phone poll. Uh, that there were companies that did that, um, there's survey monkeys.
I I had talked about doing, yeah, that if you were to go to the. If you go to the ballot, that you would do a like an actual poll.
Before going to them.
Yeah, in my experience, um, when we went to the ballot for bond measure, we would. Poll the community and we'd actually hire pollsters, like people actually do that, um. This is a council decision, uh, or to decide how you want to finance it and, you know, ultimately. I think as elected representatives, um, you're the ones that. Listen to the community, get that feedback. We keep providing an avenue for folks to provide feedback, so we can certainly. Do that and continue to bring in that information, but I think ultimately. You know, that's that's up to you, what you want to do. I haven't planned any activities to. Ask a question. I mean, I'm I'm looking to you guys to get that answer.
Yeah, I was looking, I was just wondering what the options were that are available, um, Jenna?
And I think I know that it's going to come down to cost for me, voting for everyone. Um, and I'm really excited to see those costs. Like, there are multiple different ways, and so, you know, a bond is one way that it actually does come out of our pockets. The general fund. You know, doesn't hit our, so I think, you know, when we see those numbers in a couple of months, that that will. That will help and, um, put our minds at ease a little bit. Okay.
For sure, and that's why I wanted to share that timeline with you is to know that it's not actually even just the cost, right? Like, I think we all kind of probably have some sense of what it's going to come in at. It's how you pay for it and whether the cities. Resource, you know, and how that's divided up. And so that's what I'm saying. It's not just like, here's the money, how are we going to do it? I need to come to you with. Kind of a range of options to look at what those impacts are. And so that, I'm working on that and we're close, but we don't have all the information we need to to give it to you and. Incomplete information is also just as dangerous as bad information, so. So you're totally right, and that will happen. And we'll look at. You know, and just for education for folks, especially when we're talking about, well, how does this compare to all the other things we have to do? There's very limited funding for facilities like this, so. It's either the general fund, so the income we bring in. Or it's a bond, and there may be a few grants out there, but not many. Whereas like water and storm and there's infrastructure grants, all kinds of things for those types and. Different fees we can apply to pay for those sorts of things. City halls, not so much. So it's going to be a fairly, um. Clean assessment of like, if you take this route, here's what happens, and if you take this route, here's what happens, and then here's the financial picture of the city. Because you have to make that cost assessment in the context of. All of this stuff.
Right, so you're, when when you pull together all of these numbers, we're going to also have. Like Dan will have finished his risk assessment for the public works and and will. Have some sort of, uh, idea of what road projects are coming down the way and also. Um. Other other bonds that we might be facing in the next year. Uh, will all of that be? Pulled together when we get this information?
Well, that'll be pulled together as part of the budget process, so the capital improvement plan will be done. I mean, it's no secret, the city has between ten and. Twenty million dollars worth of infrastructure projects, but I don't think it breaks down as simplistically as that. It's like. We're looking at revenue, diversification right now, for example, right? That's one of the cogs of this that. We're trying to find alternative revenue sources for infrastructure. We can take weight off. The general fund and find other fees and sources to pay for infrastructure, that frees up money in the general fund. So we have to show kind of how all those things fit together. Um, we, i- if you're asking me, do we have a financial strategy for a capital plan? No, we don't. Um, part of the financial strategy, right, is revenue diversification. Raise your fees. Look at other options, like, that's part of the hard work. There's no magic wand, there's no pot of money at the end of the rainbow at some grant that's going to save us. It's actually the council making concerted thoughtful decisions about different funding sources to fund. The various infrastructure we have. The capital plan will show kind of what we think we can do over the next couple of years with the resources that we have. But the real work you guys are doing is going to be making those changes, should you decide to. To create new funding streams. That's where the action is, and that's where we actually start to make action forward. Um, but we have the list and that will make us more competitive for other sources of funding. Um, but no, that's not, that's that's part of the budget process. Which will be, um, looked at, but when we're talking about financing a city hall, we're talking about the general fund. So I just want to make that really clear, that the general fund is paying. For that. Does that answer the question?
It did, thank you.
Great.
Well, I think it's, when you look at the general fund too, it's really interesting. To break down where the sources of revenue come for the general fund. Because we're looking at probably. Sixty percent of it coming from our T L T tax.
Yep.
So there's, there are lots of ways to look at at this, and I think, uh, Leila will be focusing on all of those when we get to a point. Of discussion.
Building the whole story. I know, but it is part, part of it is the story. It's really trying to understand how does it all fit together.
Yeah, well, one of the, you know, one of the largest, uh, sources of income for cities is grants, and we've. We've kind of just, we're just starting to explore those a little bit, but.
The largest source of income for cities is grants?
Grants, yeah, for infrastructure, particularly for public works and getting some. Water money in here for, uh, for Dan, so.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, well, Walport got six million dollars in one year, and he's, you know, working on. More millions, trying, his goal is twenty million, so, um.
That's awesome.
Hmm.
Uh, we have a lift finally, so we're getting, we're catching up with Walport, look out.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um, yeah. That's one way. There's, you know, I think, um, utilities. By and large, should be paying for themselves to some extent, and so. That's through fees and other ways that we get resources, which we don't do right now. So we have a lot of options here in Manzanita. And I look forward to working with all of you on them. Did we want to just, um, I know we're we're towards the end, but. There was this issues of other sites and, um. I wondered if we could put a pin in that or not.
Leila, can I, can I, uh, just, uh, ask what, um. Or or make the public aware of what we just did, so that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So.
A recap, a recap for the public, what we.
What I'm assuming is that we've, um. Agreed to move to thirty percent schematic design with scheme one.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Well, and the ad block is new build. I mean, we're in, we're in.
It's a new building, yeah.
It's a new build, and I, and I, I'm really glad you brought that up, Brad, because I think. It's really clear, and it needs to be very clear to the public of what that decision was and, uh, and what we made. That decision, and I think discussing. The other options right now and whether we want to pursue them is really important.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you take that, what you just set a step further than would the decision be, we've also decided it is under him.
Well, I think it's going to really depend on when we see the numbers, um, you know, if we're looking at something that's, um. That that is more than we can afford, then, uh, we're going to have to go back and figure out what other options we have. Um, Cannon Beach has decided they're not going to be able to afford their sixteen million dollar. City Hall, so they're sort of scrapping that and starting over, um. I I I think we really have to get the numbers together before we can, uh, before we can have that conversation.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I think, I bear, sounds, I think you're, you hit the nail on the head. I think. We are on a track, we have decided on that track, it is Underhill Plaza. The go-no-go line will be what we've all said, it's can we afford it and how, what is one of the financial implications of that? So, uh, I think the answer to Leila's question is yes, it is Underhill Plaza, uh. And the decision will be made, it looks like sometime in May. We'll get information in April and hopefully be able to make that decision in May.
Thank you, that's super clear direction and really helpful, um. Now, it's great for the design team, we can just, we can move forward now, um, so that's great, thank you.
So we're counting on you guys.
You sure can. Lible crew.
Are there any last, uh, comments or that? It looks like we have. Uh, no, any comments that, before we wrap up? Okay, then it looks like we can go ahead and adjourn our meeting at three twenty-one.
Great.
On an early one.
Yeah.
Hey, a lot.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.